We'll call a meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have roll call, please.
For Hallie?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Oh, yeah?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We'll try not to make you talk too much, Stacy. Citizen comments, anyone who would like to approach the council that's not already on the agenda may do so now. Briefly.
Yes, I can do that. Um, hello, my name is, and I just wanted to have a quick shout out about the robotics team event that's going on on Saturday, so we already know about that. Um, but they're gonna be showing a really short, less than thirty minute documentary called The Power of Minnesota, and it just talks a lot about the really cool solar projects and wind farm projects that are going on in the state. It's only about the state. And then they'll talk a little bit about their solar project, and then have a little discussion about the future of clean energy in Morris. So it'll be super fun, and I'll be there, and they'll be there, and I'm assuming you'll be there. But everybody will be there, it'll be the best of Saturday.
Alright, thanks Sid. Morris Theater, two, two o'clock.
Two o'clock, yeah.
Popcorn available?
Yes.
Okay, any other citizen comments, thank you Sid. We have no public hearing tonight. We had reading and approval of minutes from ten nine, October ninth.
I will move approval of the ten nine regular minutes.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, carried. And we have the same condensed version of the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, carried. We have audit of, uh, the consent agenda, which consists of audit of city bills, the September nineteenth tourism board minutes, September nineteenth tree board minutes, gambling reports from the Morris hockey, and revenue expenditure report for September. I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I will second.
Okay, any discussion on any of the items on the consent agenda? Have a couple comments on the tourism meeting minutes. Um, I really would like to see a listing of who was there and who was not, on all minutes. It just, it helps out, you know, similar to what the tree board, they have who's attending and who's not there. Also, they're gonna work with the Pope County Tribune. They haven't got any bids back from Stevens County Times, and have they reached out to the Stevens County Times?
They met with Stevens County Times, Stevens County Times can't do what the tourism board wants done.
Oh, they can't do it?
They can't do it.
Okay.
So that's the recommendation of the tourism board. It, you know, the, they're, they're not, well, easiest way to explain it is what they're looking for is they're looking for something beyond what's normally printed in the local area, like the visitors guide, which is done by the newspaper. So, the, they've, they've reached out and looked at all kinds of options from other places to be able to do a tourism guide that they can send out to different places, like the Mall of America and all these different places. So they've, they've sat down and looked at all different kind of options through the last probably two years of what to do. And so that's one of the things that they're looking at doing.
So what do you mean, like, it would be like a paper, I mean, printed material, or if you're still not understanding?
It'll be a brochure, but it's gotta be, you know, the easiest way to explain it is, none of us are marketers. We're not marketers. So they're reaching out as a committee to find marketers that can come in and show us a marketing product that, that we're interested in having printed up and sending out to all these different places to market Morris as a destination for tourism. So, it, it's really complicated when you sit down and look at exactly, we, we can't be the ones that design our own brochures 'cause none of us are marketers. You know, and so then, they've, they've sat down, they've talked with a number of different firms, actually the original firm that did the branding for tourism, It Starts Here, was a company out of St. Cloud, and, and before, before they, they got to the end of the process, they, they really stopped with that marketing company, and then stepped back, and then tried to figure out how to do the marketing stuff locally, and it's just not working. You know, it's content, it's the types of things that you wanna see put into it, so they've looked at different options, different places, picked up different brochures from different places, and, and that's one of the things that they're trying to figure out what to do.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's just, like Blaine said, it is, it's a tough thing, you know, when you're trying to find something, we, we've looked at all different signs of, of, of brochures and guides, that, you know, how much advertising you wanna roll into it, that sort of thing, you know, 'cause sometimes you can get inundated with, with advertising and things like that in there, so, you know, let's try to wrap yourself around something that you can draw out of that's not gonna be what cumbersome people get through. The direction that we looked at it. Now this is just to fill in the gaps from our social media campaign that we're doing.
Okay, um, thank you for the explanation. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, carried. We have no petitions, requests, and communications, we have ordinance and resolution. A resolution opposing the concept of allowing strong beer, spirits, and wine to be sold for off-premise consumption at any outlet other than a municipal liquor store. Why, my question, the first question that I have, why do we need to do this?
Because in the legislature in the upcoming session, there's gonna be a very strong push by big box retailers and other people to expand the ability of those retailers to be able to sell liquor. Grocery stores selling liquor. Right now, we, we control the liquor market in Morris, because there's a state law that allows municipalities to choose to be the only seller of liquor. So, so nobody can start a liquor store in Morris, because Morris has by law the right to own a liquor store and run the liquor store. So if they open it up, if they change that law and open it up to everybody, you could see a liquor store in the grocery store, you could see liquor stores in all kinds of places. And so from the League of Minnesota City's standpoint, the municipal liquor store, you know, lobbying group and stuff, you know, this is a resolution trying to protect our ability to own our business and be able to run our business.
Well, you still can run our business.
You still can run the business, but you'll be, you'll be out of business really quick.
And why, just because of?
As soon as, as soon as competition comes into play, you'll be out of business. I guarantee ya. 'Cause one of the things we won't do is, we will not subsidize our business by taxpayer dollars. There are liquor stores in Minnesota that are subsidizing our, their liquor stores by taxpayer dollars, which I don't understand how they do that. But, they're not making money, we're making money.
Yeah.
And so our money goes back into the community, but if you open it up to, to other places selling liquor by state law, then, then you're gonna lose control of what you have right now. So we're trying to protect ourselves as a business.
So really, I don't understand, this, this is really just a resolution saying that we oppose the concept. It's nothing here saying that, 'cause we can't make the law saying that we can't, that nobody else can do it. 'Cause if the state says, the state overturns it, we have to allow it. This is just saying, stating that we oppose it. No, we couldn't.
So if, so if a grocery store wanted to put in a liquor store, we couldn't say, no, you can't do that?
Right.
As long as they change it at the state.
If they change it.
If they change the law.
If they change the law, we will not be able to.
Okay, so what, I'm not understanding then the whole spiel before that, that we can't stop them?
If they change the law.
If they change, this is opposing that law?
We're opposing them changing the law to open up liquor sales in other venues like liquors, um, grocery stores. 'Cause that's what they wanna do.
Yeah, well, if you go to other states, it is kind of convenient.
It is, it's very convenient, but then we'll be out of business.
It's a financial tool, that we transfer funds from our liquor back in to help pay for things in our city. So I guess that's the part of it that we look at, or I think we need to look at, that it's helping pay for things every year, that we transfer funds from our liquor sales to, to pay for things throughout the city, to, to help out the taxpayers of our community.
Do our taxpayers know what the, know everything about the liquor store, and do they know that, how much money from that liquor store goes to pay for?
As much as we provide information in city council meetings, I mean.
Well, I mean, an example was the, when we did the spray park, that underground line that we ran across there, we use, we hadn't budgeted for that, so we used those funds to pay for that. And, you know, that's, that's a project that the city, you know, all residents in town benefit from, so that's just one example.
But we normally transfer seventy-five to a hundred thousand from the liquor fund into paying for things annually that we included part of our budget every year. Not that we have to, but we have that option, and we have done that.
Well, and if we didn't do that, we'd have to raise taxes.
We'd be raising taxes.
Or not make the improvements.
Or, or not do it.
Yeah.
What service do you want, not when I see, right?
Exactly.
Alright, so that makes sense, so, so this resolution will be provided to the league and to our legislators and?
So it's just weighing in on our position on whether or not they should open up liquor sales to other venues like grocery stores.
I, I certainly agree with it, but I just wasn't quite sure why. But thank you for the explanation. I will make a motion to approve the resolution opposing the concept of allowing strong beer, spirits, and wine to be sold for off-premise consumption at any outlet other than the municipal liquor store.
I will second.
Any further discussion? We'll have roll call, vote on this resolution, please.
Ms. Alvey?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Alexson?
Yes.
Yes. City manager's report. Yeah, 'cause this resolution you gave us is just for EDA, right?
It's just for the EDA, that's what's gotta be approved.
Okay.
Um, I'll just touch on a couple of them. Uh, the MS four, we met with Chuck the Wolf from Bolton, Maine, and, uh, we're, we're gonna have to take, take some serious looks at how we're gonna enforce our stormwater rules coming up, and you'll see a lot more of that information coming through, um, the biggest thing that we learned meeting with them is that MPCA is going out and checking cities that have MS four permits and making sure they're doing the things that they, they're supposed to be doing, and, and if not, probably issuing a citation for the things that aren't being done, and, I mean, there's just little things like, you know, mowing grass into streets and making sure that we're inspecting all of our stormwater infrastructure and all those kind of things. It's a lot of paperwork stuff. Actually, I think, I'll just answer questions, if anybody's got any questions on anything that's in here. We're ready for the retreat at Camp Rupley, there's, I think right now we're up to thirty-two people that are gonna be going up there, either for the whole thing or at least one of the days. So it should be a good turnout and be able to take care of, um, some of the things that we wanna do, setting goals and figuring out projects.
Well, and I have a question specifically about ending here, but it's kinda related. With regards to the storm sewers, just up the street from me to the west, on, uh, Eighth and, and I think it's, I'm trying to remember. The smaller catch basins that we put in, the newer ones, the grate openings are so narrow that it takes literally nothing to fill them up and they're, they're plucked instantly. I mean, they're, they, they can't be half inch wide. Well, it don't take much to plug those up, so I'm just wondering why we put such a small grate opening in those?
'Cause you don't want anything to go down the sewer. So anything that goes down the sewer winds up being a problem with storm water. You only want water going down there. So if they're clean, then the water will go down, if they're not clean. So that's where, you know, it really is gonna take a lot of work to try to get people educated in not putting things out into the gutter. I mean, I had probably three complaints this week where people were complaining 'cause their neighbors were blowing their leaves out into the street. The, the accepted practice is not to put your leaves in the street 'cause a street sweeper's gonna come by. The accept, accepted practice is that you take your leaves and you pick them up, and then you haul them somewhere. I mean, that's what we have to do, and same way with grass, people mow grass out into the street, it goes into the gutter, goes down the sewer. And we have to prevent that, so that's one of the requirements that we have, is we have to have a system in place to prevent that from happening. And then, you know, they're gonna judge us on how well we do that. You know, so that's one of the reasons why they put in those tighter grates, is so things don't go down in the sewer.
It's gonna, it's gonna obviously put one of our, and our street department to keep us clean.
Right.
They are gonna fill up fast.
You know, and it's an education thing, if I have a, if I have a catch basin by me, I'll clean it out. I mean, it's just common sense, otherwise my water's gonna back up in my, my street area, and, and, you know, that's part of what we have to do too, is under the permit, is, uh, implement an education process for everybody so they know and understand that they can't be doing that.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the city manager's report? We did get, uh, at your place tonight, um, the Morse Police Department media reports for first week of October. I think we all got a packet in the, in the mail, and I believe that was addressed in the city manager's report. I don't know if anybody has any comments other than what Blaine said, it really doesn't have a lot to do with the city of Morris, so it does and it doesn't. Um, other thing, reminder Thursday at five fifteen is the budget work session, right here. Any other business to come before the council?
Just regarding that terminal escape, what, what is the resolve, I mean, what has happened or is not happening? I mean, I read the, I read the thing, has there been any, is there any ground resolved to itself?
Well, it's, it's their building issue. It had nothing to do with us. You know, and actually, um, you know, I, I think where, I think where the big issue came in is, you know, the manager of the building told the renter something that they assumed was correct, and it was not correct. You know, so we did not have a problem in that building, we haven't had a problem in that building. We know we do have places where we do have problems with, you know, sewer, um, not, not so much sewer backing up as much as our system trying to keep up with all the, the water that's coming into the system, and that's, you know, part of the whole sump pump issues, uh, trying to keep all the excess water coming up and going into the sanitary sewer system. But, um, they, they, they did a couple things with that building to try to correct a problem that they had in the past, and, um, it sounded like it failed in this, this rainstorm that we had, and unfortunately, you know, their, their tenants that were on the bottom floors wound up dealing with it, but our insurance company looked at it and, and determined that it wasn't our issue, it was not sewer backup, it was groundwater that infiltrated down into their lower level in that building because of the way the drainage is set up for that property.
So when we're checking.
That's happened before.
So when we're checking with our water softeners, and we got Ben, our service corps person working with us, is that something that we can incorporate to double check with our sump pumps?
Yeah, absolutely.
To get it done, I know we've, we've tried to place, and when we've done street improvements, it's helped take care of problems where the storm sewers going into the sanitary, um, a lot of these other projects, but we haven't done anything to speak of, and we're probably not going to here for a bit, it looks like. So just to try, I mean, that's, that's helped take care of problems and sealing up our system, I think we had some trailer court and out on twenty-eight, just things that we need to keep working on and maintaining.
Yeah, we're doing a much better job, but they dyke, from what I understand, they dyked in that building, and then they had the internal, external sump thing to get the water from inside the dyke out through the dyke. 'Cause I remember, I remember when they put that in, and we all sat back and said, this doesn't sound like it's a good idea, but it's private property and, and we don't regulate that. And, and, you know, the sump pump failed the way it sounded, based upon the information, but it's theirs, it's not ours. And then, the one, the one item, well, I'll just, I'll say two things. We do not have check valves on our sewer pipes.
Right.
You know, that is, that is something a house would have to keep sewer from backing up into the house. So that was kind of a point of contention, the other thing is, a public data request is not you asking questions. Somebody comes in and says to me, I have an official public data request, what did you guys do during that flood? That is not an official public data request. Official public data request would be, do you have documentation of what you did during the flood? Like a report or something, and, and we would have to give it to whoever asked for it if we had it. But we don't have any because we don't, there really wasn't anything to document. You know, when the guys are out doing their, their, the closest thing that I could see, uh, if you read through that whole thing was, if we are inundated with water and we actually have to pump out our sanitary sewer system onto the street, which happens during heavy rains, you know, some people might not think that's a very good thing to do, but it's either that or it backs up into the houses, then we have to call the state duty officer and tell them before we do it. And then they, they mark it down that, you know, it's okay to do it, and theoretically, it's not a big deal because the, the amount of water that comes in a big rainstorm is gonna dissipate it before it actually gets into the storm sewer system. But, uh, we don't have any information to share because, you know, there wasn't anything documented on that. But if we had it, we would've gave it, and, and so then we struggled a little bit trying to find out what was actually being asked of us, and eventually, um, you know, we got the individual in touch with our insurance agent through Deb, and, uh, they, they were able to make a claim, and the, uh, claims people came out, looked at it, made a determination that it was not city-related.
Now, that parking lot from S C M C there, of course, is right about something to that property. That water must drain down Columbia from that parking lot, doesn't it?
Uh, they actually have, they have catch basins in the parking lot, I think, that, that drains in. Everything goes into South Street and heads down to Oregon Avenue.
Okay.
And then comes, comes down through Green River Park.
Alright.
Okay, anything else to come before the council? Thank you, meeting adjourned.
I will open our EDA meeting, can I have roll call, please?
Ms. Hallie?
Yes.
Alvey?
Yes.
Alexson? Geez?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Uh, minutes from our last meeting.
I will move approval.
October ninth, two thousand eighteen.
I will move approval.
Motion from Mr. Geez.
I'll second.
And a second, any discussion on anything? All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Uh, new business would be a resolution. Blaine, can you highlight this for us?
Yeah, so you have two documents, one is the resolution, I actually put a new copy of the resolution, and, uh, council member Miller pointed out, I, I, they didn't have a signature, uh, of the signature lines in there, so when I added them, I had to redo the thing, and so you're actually gonna see on page two that there's two, two lines where asked for the motion, who made the motion, so you can just disregard one of those. So that, that is the resolution approving the, the agreement. And one of the things I said at the last city council meeting was, you basically had all the information at the TIF meeting as far as, uh, what was gonna be generated from, um, tax increment in this new district. And I believe the total amount was about one point two million dollars in tax increment. It's a twenty-five-year housing district, um, and it was gonna generate about one point two million dollars. One of the things that we do is we go back to Ellers and Associates, and we ask them to look at that, that project, and give us their best recommendation on how much tax increment we should provide in this, and it's really based upon, you know, what, what the project is gonna involve, and what the developer is gonna be able to get out of it. Let me just see if I get all my stuff in line here. So, the packet that I gave out to you on the back page is some information.
Is it normal for this to come out right before the meeting?
I'm looking for the back.
Is there, I mean, this is the EDA meeting, that's why it came out right before, or not in the packet of information?
Um, it's not necessarily normal, but we have to wait for our financial consultants to give it to us, and because of the fact that, you know, the developer wanted to get started, that is part of the reason, um, but at the same time, most of the information was provided in the, in the last meeting that you had. If you look at the back, the back end of, uh, this document, you're gonna see a two-page pro forma where it talks about, uh, the, the income from the project and, and how much it, how much it's gonna generate, um, what the expenses are, and if you look down towards the bottom of E two, you're gonna see the net cash that the developer, twenty-two thousand dollars, without assistance, it's a negative thirteen, four fifty-five. And so, he's not gonna do the project to lose money. So the amount of tax increment that, um, Ellers is recommending that we give out is, is not one point two million dollars, it's five hundred and four thousand dollars of tax increment and five percent interest on, on the note. Um, so it totals about eight hundred thousand dollars, so the balance of that tax increment that's, uh, generated by this project would, would actually not be going to the developer over the, the, the course of that development. If you go back to the original, to the agreement and look at page two, let me see, two, three. So page six of the developer agreement, really the meat of the whole thing that you need to understand with this is how this is divvied out to the project. So I said it's five hundred and four thousand, but he's actually got a four-phased project. In the first phase, um, the amount of tax increment would be two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So if he does nothing but the first phase, uh, then it just dies there. Because, once he shows us the documentation for the expenses that, that are eligible under this agreement, then we actually issue a note in the amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars that we use to calculate, uh, how much principal and interest we would give back through tax increments and annually. Uh, and again, keep in mind that it's just money that's paid by the developer. So if, if nothing happens, then there's no money. If he does phase one, um, he's gonna start generating some tax increment to help pay off this two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. If he does phase two, it's ninety-six thousand, if he does phase three, it's, uh, another ninety-six thousand, and phase four is another ninety-six thousand dollars. Uh, the, the other thing to keep in mind too is that he's already given us a deposit of thirteen thousand to do, to pay for the legal work, so you're gonna see some bills coming through for legal and financial work, and that's paid for out of the deposit that he put down. Um, part of this agreement is the requirement to provide, um, housing to people within an income base. So under this agreement, he's required to have twenty percent of the units, uh, in, in phase one, and moving forward in the other phases that are made available to people within fifty percent of the median family income, I believe. And that's on page eight, if you look down in the middle of page eight. So he has to comply with that, making those units available, because it's a housing district. If you go to page, one of the annexes here, I'm just gonna find it for you. If you go to page, uh, one of the annexes here, I'm just gonna find it for you.
I just got a question, Blaine, regarding the term, I see a couple of little dots. The termination date is February first, twenty forty-seven.
Right.
That's forty-nine years, I thought the maximum was twenty-six, so if you go on.
But the increments aren't gonna start until twenty twenty, so the, the increments don't start until twenty twenty-one.
He has up to five years to complete the project.
Oh, I see.
So if he doesn't complete the project, the second, third, fourth phase, then it doesn't start until that begins, I believe.
So the increments would start in twenty twenty-one, the last increment would be in twenty forty-six, and then the, the district would be closed up in twenty forty-seven.
I just thought it was a tactic.
And if you go back to annex C one, these are all the allowable uses of the increment.
And assuming this is all drawn up by our legal team?
Yes. Yeah, it's pretty straightforward agreement. And the note, the note does not get signed until we have everything that's in place, so we, we'll sign the agreement, but we won't sign the notes.
I just have a question, just to, just to make sure I have this correct. But on page seven, EDA's obligation to make payments on the tax increment note on any note payment date. The only way that the payments come is from Mr. Timmerman paying, or the only way he gets the money back is if he pays us the money, it's refunded. We are under no obligation to, to pay this money. It's just refunding his taxes back up to a maximum amount over the time period with the interest. So we're not under any obligation, if for some reason something happens, Mr. Timmerman doesn't do it or doesn't make the tax payment, we're not obligated to pay back. It's money that's refunded back to him from his taxes paid.
Yep, there's no tax liability, it's all increment.
Any other discussion?
Does the EDA execute the check back, or how does that, here is, and what?
The city does.
The city does, not, doesn't go through EDA specifically, I thought maybe that's what that meant, but I get it.
Typically, it'll be interest first and then principal. Yep. So the, uh, and so you're looking at, I think, I was just looking for the di, it's like two, well, yeah, here, so, um, two point seven, almost two point eight million dollars of development is what's gonna take place.
Thank you. Any other questions from anyone? If not, we have a resolution in front of us approving a development agreement with Timmerman Properties.
I'll hold on that resolution, approving the agreement for check district number sixty.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Walters?
Yes.
Alvey?
Yes.
Ellison?
Yes.
Geez?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Any other business to bring before our EDA this evening?
I can, I, I would ask, uh, just a clarification, I mean, this, this TIF district obviously is for housing. Is there, I've been questioned by other people about different businesses that got money to start their business. Is that a TIF also, or is that something different? If it was a business, not a developed, like, housing development, or?
Well, this is certainly a business, but?
Yeah, so TIF, TIF is typically redevelopment, typically housing. The, the other business, uh, um, assistance is probably through, actually, the City Ed Minnesota Investment Fund loans. Uh, the Stevens County Economic Improvement Commission has, uh, a loan pool, uh, that, that loans can be made out of. So they're typically, Department of Employment Economic Development has business assistance loans, industrial, uh, assistant loans. Actually, I just had a, a company coming in, and we'll see what happens. Company came in today that's interested in the industrial park property, the penny acres that we got back. And, and since they weren't a business that was coming from another community, uh, we can actually look at some of the deed assistance to help get them onto the piece of property. So typically, the business ones come from a different pool of money.
There was a jobs zone, or there was jobs like?
So like Bonanza Bean was through the Jobs E tax credit program.
Loan money to.
But has there been TIF financing used for businesses in Morris?
I don't believe so, no, I don't know. I, I was gonna check and see if that's a law, I don't think it's an allowable use.
You said last meeting, to actually start a business, was tax abatement?
Well, yeah, well, Willie's, yeah, but that's, it's.
But that was a tax abatement, correct?
But that, yeah, so re, TIF is used for redevelopment of businesses. Yes, and TIF was used for Willie's, not tax abatement.
Yeah, it was, it was TIF. It was TIF for, uh?
So depending on how you ask the question, you need to ask, is TIF, can TIF be used for redevelopment? And has it been used for redevelopment in Morris?
Yes, a lot.
Yes.
Okay.
You know, like the funeral home was part of a TIF project.
Right.
Well, this is number sixteen, that means there were fifteen other.
Yeah, there's lots of homes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the, you know, turning, turning that money over to SEIC, of course, was a mandate by the state, you know, we had to turn it over to an entity governed by.
No, we didn't have to.
We chose to.
But they, I thought there was a recommendation from the state to do that.
Well, they changed the rules so we could do it.
They allowed us to do it.
It just made more sense, because if you try to do it yourself, then you're either hiring consultants to do it anyway. And this way, the SEIC has somebody that does that kind of work.
But we were borrowing money through ours and they were borrowing money through theirs, correct? And it was?
Right.
It was two separate pots, and you're keeping track of it, and it just simplified things to?
Yeah, no, that's been, I was just, my point was, it's been a good, a good thing.
Yeah.
It has been a good.
Well, today's a perfect example, so, you know, I have people come in and they talk to me, and it's like, I'm gonna turn you over to Cheryl Coon, because she's the one that's knowledgeable about all these different things that are out there, and then she'll work with you to try to get the grant applications put together.
I guess it's just, you know, for me, it's, the only ones I've been involved with were housing. And so, you know, the other ones I weren't, wasn't involved with, so as people ask those questions, it's just good to know the, the answers and?
Yeah, and they have one other, they have one other, they call it ground fields. So if you have like an industrial site that maybe had contamination and, you know, chemicals that were used and stuff, so they have another pot of money that, you know, you can apply for grants to help clean that up for redevelopment and get more things onto it. You know, so it just depends on what's happening. If it's bare ground, it's really difficult, you can't do TIF, you can do tax abatement. Uh, but you could do business, you know, uh, grants from deed and things like that.
But things constantly change too with the state, with what they do allow us with the jobs. It was huge and it was a big area, a lot of money was spent on that, but that, that is closed or is closing. So it's, it's constantly evolving. Any other information, anything else for the EDA? If not, I will adjourn.